Last track. So we call this meeting to order and have us a roll call please now.
Jay Ackerman.
Here.
E Flynn.
Here.
T Giles.
Here.
B Jalison.
Here.
R Laconal.
Here.
H Randall.
Here.
K Van Bergen Buda.
Could you please rise and join and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is concerned agenda, one motion for the approval of the minutes from August fourteenth, twenty twenty five and approval of the manifest.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Moved by Ben, second by Evelyn. Questions or comments?
Um, so just real quick, page fourteen. Oh, sorry.
On the manifest.
On the manifest. Um, just, just, I, we're all probably gonna answer it. Sports turf, sports turf in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars, seventy-eight eighty-two. Um, was that for the fertilizer?
Let me, just so I don't misspeak.
Yeah, no, I just, just a lot of money. I wanna make sure it's.
It's for all three schools though. Any, any, if it's for Jocelyn's.
Where's the manifest?
I have it right here. What page did you say? I was just.
Yes, fourteen.
And it was for how much?
Seventy-eight eighty-two, and then there was an LES and a WPS.
Yeah.
It was three of them.
Yeah.
So for a total of ninety-two thirty-two.
Yeah, I think so, but yeah.
Do you want this or who wanted this?
I might have another one. I don't know.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
That's it? This is the new back, back. Okay. It doesn't fit the cabinet, the whole thing.
So for that one, that would have been all the summer work around dealing with the clay for the pitching mounds.
Mm-hmm.
So rebuilding those mounds and getting them to sit for the summer. Um, using Pro-Choice conditioner, um, putting vertique weight down, which is part of the aeration. The unfortunate part is, in this, nobody could predict it, when he put this stuff down.
Drought.
It wet.
We had a lorraine.
And then we got into a twenty-one day drought, right?
Yeah.
So this is typical summer procedures for him to get the fields ready for the upcoming year. And then there are some game day, um, layouts.
Okay, so this is the whole year?
This is for the summer.
Oh, the summer.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do have a meeting with, uh, Jocelyn's coming up to talk about, you know, what can we start doing? And what can, do we need?
Trying to cut back a little bit.
Yeah.
All right, um, next one, real quick, uh, page eighteen, uh, voucher number ten forty-eight, if you don't mind, right here. Um, it just says, uh, I don't even know where, really, there's so many numbers, uh, it says NCB Visa, August twenty-fifth statement, travel. Seventeen, so it's, uh, page eighteen, uh, one, two, three, four, five down. Five, like, numbers, letters down. It's ju, it's just seventeen seventy-nine for travel. I just didn't. Seventeen seventy-nine forty?
So they would have covered, like, out of the Perkins grant when we went to, uh, Keene. They put the rooms on a credit card, so we don't have to carry those costs for multiple weeks to get reimbursed.
Okay, so Melissa, when it's yellow, it means it's paid by a grant?
Yeah.
So it's not to taxpayers per se?
Right.
That's grant reimbursable.
Yep.
Okay.
Cause it was a multi-day conference in Keene.
All right, yeah, and the last one, the only one before I sign, is, uh, Wombat for five hundred dollars. Wombat Golf Club? For five hundred.
James, while he's looking, you know, if you have questions while you're looking at that at home, call us. We can, we can give you the information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I usually review before the meeting.
I did.
He wants to review one when he comes.
I like to see it on paper.
Yeah.
I don't, my, my computer's this small, you guys gave me, and I, 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 you know, I, I just, I can't. I like to see it here.
So that was an equipment line?
Okay.
And so the invoice wouldn't have come through me? And so I can only speculate that it was something for the golf team, whether clubs.
Oh, for the team?
Yeah.
Recently purchasing some stuff for the golf.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the manifest or the minutes?
Mr. Tara?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on to the public comment period. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in the public comment period? Seeing no one as yet, the public comment period will remain open until six thirty-five. If you have a comment that you would like to make before then, please raise your hand and we'll stop what we're doing and you'll be recognized. Next is the superintendent's report.
Well, today we have Katie Spade here to talk about the recovery-friendly workplace. Um, and also maybe she might put a couple of words in on what's going on at Copper Cannon today.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, let's start, start with today. Um, first of all, thanks for having me here for a few minutes. So today, um, I've been at Copper Cannon with our ninth grade class doing orientation that will last through this evening into tomorrow. They, um, I was just saying, this ninth grade class is, is really exciting. I think, um, they are really fun and engaging and inquisitive and kind, um, and, uh, really age-appropriate, um, which is a nice thing to see. Um, the kids are all, um, I think they had fifty kids sign up and some kids didn't show, but there was like, I, I wanna say we have at least forty there, um, so a lot. They have been going around doing cooperative games, um, learning some new things. We had some of our students, uh, shoot some arrows at an archery station that had never shot arrows. Um, and they have been doing some critical thinking as far as, um, how do we do this together, this puzzle together? And what's the most efficient and what, what, um, skills help us and how to, could this be transferred to high school? So it's a really cool thing and it's neat that we brought back the overnight for the ninth grade. Um, and Copper Cannon is a great venue. Uh, historically, we've done it there in the past and they said like twenty-ten was the last time they thought they had an overnight there. We went with AMC for a while, but Copper Cannon is a great venue for that.
Thank you for going.
Yeah, it's fun. Thanks for letting me go.
How many students?
Um, we had fifty sign up and then some just no called, no showed this morning, um, which is a skill, right? We're gonna learn about how in high school we say, hey, I changed my mind.
Right.
Um, but like forty, I would say.
That's a good number.
And there's, there's eighty-seven in the class.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask.
That are registered on power.
And that's a lot, and what I'm seeing already is a lot of interest in the ninth graders asking about, um, like clubs like Yalta, wanting to know about the, the hike that were going on, stuff like that, that we've in the past had interest in and, and then in the past few years really had to drum up some stuff. So I think that I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful.
Did the other forty-seven come to school today?
I, I wasn't here. I wasn't here.
Um, yes, they had, they had, uh, something scheduled for the people that.
Our attendance was excellent last week. It was, uh, I think it's up on the board ninety-something?
Ninety-six percent.
Ninety-six percent, and that was higher than the state average. So this school year's off to a great start with that.
Great.
And then just to transition to kind of my, my other reason for being here, um, September is National Recovery Month. Um, and that is a time, um, that supports and promotes supportive work environments for people recovering from substance use disorders and mental health conditions. Um, and last year, uh, we came to the board with the idea of SAU thirty-six becoming a recovery-friendly school district. Unfortunately, I couldn't use that name, not really wanted to, because there's recovery-friendly schools. So the, um, the name that we've got, we're a recovery-friendly workplace. We are the second district in the state of New Hampshire to, to do this, so first in northern New Hampshire. And it was not a very hard thing for us to do because we already do a lot to support, um, our staff, our family, and our students around. So the mission when we were talking about this was to, um, help address major health challenges facing school and our community, including depression, suicide, substance use disorder. Our goal was to increase education, uh, provide training and resources to help district implement evidence-based practice to support individuals navigating recovery. Uh, there's a lot of reasons why they wanna do this. Um, one that kind of speaks to, eh, the business mind is that untreated, um, costs uh, for, um, people living with mental health challenges or substance use challenges, um, cost New Hampshire's economy about two point three-six billion annually.
Whoa.
Yeah, and about sixty-six percent of those costs are incurred by the, the business, which the district would be in this case, in the form of impaired productivity or absenteeism. So aside from the humanitarian reason why to do this, i- it just makes good business sense. Um, and I'm happy to declare that we have passed, um, the requirements to be officially considered a recovery-friendly school district. I would like to just read our proclamation, um, so you can hear it and then I'll entertain any questions. So, uh, White Mountain Regional School District, SAU thirty-six, recognizes that substance use disorder affects many of our community, including our staff, students, and their families in various ways. As educators and community leaders, we believe in the power of knowledge and dialogue to create positive change and reduce stigma. We wish to declare SAU thirty-six a recovery-friendly workplace, aiming to provide education district-wide to staff, students, and families as appropriate about substance use disorder prevention, recovery, and available support services. Reduce stigma through open, compassionate, and well-informed discussion about substance use disorders. Support the overall health and wellness of our school community, recognizing that recovery is part of a broader commitment to well-being. Collaborate with local recovery organizations and healthcare providers to ensure access to up-to-date information, information, and resources for all members of our school community. Contribute to a more inclusive school community that acknowledges and supports those impacted by mental health and substance use disorders. Through becoming a recovery-friendly workplace, we align our values of education, inclusion, and community, creating a healthier, more productive, and supportive environment for all members of SAU thirty-six. There will be no policy changes as we maintain our commitment to a drug-free workplace and prioritize staff and student safety. Our goal is to create a culture of mutual respect, understanding, and support while upholding our responsibility to maintain a safe and productive learning and working environment for all. So that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
I think it's great. I wonder if, if, what it would look like, just if, give like a quick example, like, so say, say someone needed certain supports, then how would our district then, like, what would it look like?
So oftentimes, people come to me and they'll ask, um, if they are a community member, if they're like a, a family, somebody has a family member who needs some support. Um, I, uh, will ask, um, if they've talked to their primary care physician, what kind of support they have, if they have clergy, if they have, um, clinical mental health, if they have, um, insurance through their, uh, employment. Um, or I ask if they've connected with Doorway, if they're aware of services through North Country Health Consortium. Um, and I can help make a warm handoff to those services, so it doesn't feel so nebulous. Um, one of the ways that, um, I'm trying to increase collaboration, uh, I actually have a meeting scheduled next week with, um, a member of the Doorway community to see how we can really work on getting involved in community-wide prevention stuff. So, um, how we can reach our greater school community, the families, the aunties, the uncles, um, and engage our kids in some healthy and well, um, maybe service opportunities in our community. Um, another thing that we are doing, um, is the Child Advocacy Center, um, is, uh, hosting a tour um, for, uh, our guidance office and myself, um, to sort of be able to support somebody if they have to go through that, so we can better tell them what happens in that, um, who they can expect to see, things like that. Because if, if you're in a situation where you need a forensic interview, that can be pretty scary. Um, so just trying to make stronger community connections with the supports we do have. I think a lot of the times what happens here is we go to, well, there's a real lack of support here. And I'm not saying we couldn't use more support, but we do have some really solid, good supports. And I think that it's important to create a strong connection with what we've got.
That was my question. How do you find the services availability in, in our community?
So I'm, I'm in my ninth year here.
She just knows.
Uh, um, and I've done a lot of, um, reaching out to the community, uh, a lot of community work. I actually had a great opportunity, um, during COVID, Dartmouth Health reached out to me and I was a part of their Project Echo, which is, um, like, the Echo projects are like a virtual grand rounds. Um, so I met a lot of people, um, throughout the state and I've had a lot of conversation.
What about if you're in North Country?
Yeah, so I've had a lot of conversation with them, um, cause some of them are from northern Vermont and, and we've made some connections and referrals that way. I also, um, in my role as SAP, a part of a, um, community, uh, um, collaboration where we meet monthly, um, that involves other people who work in this area and, uh, I, I reach out, I ask a lot of stuff. I ask a lot of stuff.
Great, thank you.
I think it's really important to support our people and our kids.
So, Crystal, oh, sorry, Chris. So just a few things, I'm sorry, um, so this is all new to me. So are we dealing with adults with addiction or children with addiction?
So children who.
Oh, no, I just wanna hear exactly what we're doing here.
We have both, right? We, we have both. Um, we are not providing treatment for adults with addiction.
Cause we don't have any LICSWs, do we?
Well, we do, but she's not practicing that here. Um, but what we are doing is supporting the families of our kids who our kids are best able to learn. Because if you are living with somebody who is in active addiction, it is hard to focus on learning. And so we want to help families be as healthy and well as possible, so they can get their kids to school, so that their kids' daily living needs are being met, and so that they're able to engage in their education. That's our role here, not to treat adults.
All right, so like, as a nurse, like, the whole HIPAA thing, the FERPA things, all those federal laws to protect the rights of the, the adults and the children, how are we gonna navigate that without getting in any kind of trouble?
In my role, both of those apply to me, as well as CFR forty-two, part two, which is the federal law, um, that guides substance use and substance misuse. Um, so that's how, but I have to adhere to those or be liable.
Okay, so if, if there was like a HIPAA violation, federal HIPAA violation, then you'd sort of be held liable, not the, the school board or the district?
If I, if, well, I'm an employee of the, of the school, so I, I do have, um, omissions and liability.
Right.
Um, under that, but I, I go to ethics trainings and, and this is, this is something that's talked about a lot. Um, there.
Katie is our SAP counselor. Did you know that? Yeah, okay.
If I could kind of lean in there too, because up until just the end of June, the consortium, which employs me, um, was the contract holder for the RFW project.
Right.
So, um, in the case of the, the questions around privacy, does it, excellent question, James, and I really appreciate you bringing it forward because I'm sure there are other community members who are concerned about that. Well, um, as you well know, as a clinician, you can hear all kinds of stuff. You just can't share all kinds of stuff, right? And so in a situation like Katie's in, she can't control what a student would say to her in her office, but she can control what she does with that information moving forward, right? So as she said, if a student comes to her and says, my home life is pretty chaotic because my guardian is in active use, then what Katie's doing is saying to the student, these are some resources that you could tap into as a kid or share with your parents. But she's not going out to the parent necessarily and saying, dude, you're in active addiction, let's get you hooked up, right?
Right, that's what I'd be.
That would actually be in violation of CFR forty-two.
It would absolutely be in violation. So she's got good training. The other thing that comes out of the RFW process here in the state of New Hampshire is that there are educational opportunities offered to recovery-friendly workplaces, so that their staff are aware of those landline kinds of, kinds of places. Um, and so that they also understand the impacts of, um, addiction and recovery and, um, where their lanes are, right? So it's not just about the student who might be actively using something or the staff member who might be actively using something, but also about the person whose life is impacted, two ripples out by someone who's actively using or trying to enter recovery. And it's, it's a way of making sure that it, really, this is a way of saying, this district has really good policies for making sure if students need supports, we have a pathway to point them in the right direction. It's not saying we provide all the supports, ever at all. Because we can't be all things to everybody, right? But we can make sure those families are aware of supports that are available in the hopes that they'll help their kids be ready to learn when they walk through the door.
It's like resource and referral.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great way to put it.
So wait, so would DCYF be the first call? If you were to get a child to come in and say, my, my, my mom, or my guardian or my mom or my dad is an active user and he, she did something to me?
If, if something was neglect or abuse, it would always depend, it doesn't matter if there was.
Okay, cause you're obviously a native reporter, so that's why.
Everybody over the age of eighteen in the state of New Hampshire.
No, good.
Um, okay, so really, why? Why the public school setting to adapt this and why are we the only two in the whole state to adopt this?
Because New Hampshire is actually lagging behind the rest of the United States in this.
Yes.
Um, and it is actually, it doesn't change what we've been doing. Literally, this changes nothing. It acknowledges the work and it makes it so we have, um, support. It actually gives us more support through being a member of the Recovery Friendly Workplace Initiative. We have more support to help us navigate.
So it helps us do things more effectively that we're already doing and it's.
You said it was recovery-friendly initiative?
Recovery-friendly workplace, it initially came to New Hampshire through Governor Simen.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, so, okay, so there's two, there's, so we're gonna be the second, the only one in the north, in the North Country that has adopted this?
Other people are trying to get, get.
Get on board with the RF.
Yeah.
Like the accreditation?
The, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the other district that does it?
Uh, Somersville?
Somersworth?
Somersworth.
Down at Portsmouth?
Yeah, work.
There are a lot of businesses in the North Country that have signed.
There's a ton of businesses. If you go to the Recovery Friendly Workplace website, there is a ton of businesses in this area. Um, and we've already utilized some of their, um, free trainings to, um, work with our counseling staff district-wide and, um, administration.
Okay, all right, um, so do we have to do anything as a board?
No, this was prior, before I started this, I made sure you guys were okay with it.
Last, last spring, Katie did a presentation.
Okay, all right, I wasn't on the board then, so that's why I'm trying to.
It's really report back that she's done.
I wanna get up to date before I sign off on things that I'm not familiar with, that's all. That's why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, we, we get this agenda ahead of time. You know, it would be good, maybe some of these questions you could ask ahead of time so that it isn't during this point in time. You know what I mean? We knew Katie was coming tonight. We, we knew what she was gonna talk about. So if you had questions, maybe you could ask Rob or Marion or even Katie. Um, I'm not, I don't think that challenging Katie in this format is the, is the best solution. I don't think that that makes us.
I don't see this challenging.
My involvement.
James, James.
First of all, this is my time?
Yeah. No, it isn't. It's our time.
It's my time that I'm speaking and I'm not challenging anybody.
And then to that point though.
You challenged Mike Smith a couple meetings ago too. I didn't like that either.
It, it, questions were asked that I didn't know the answer to and by asking them in the public forum, which is very appropriate, I got to hear the answers that I didn't know the answers to, so I don't have a problem.
Well, once again, you're just the chair of all, right?
Right.
Just another board.
And I've given you my opinion.
I'm proud that we are, as a school district, in it. Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, thank you, Katie. Appreciate you answering the questions.
Have a good time. Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Any more questions?
You gonna go do marshmallows now?
I am.
You're going back?
Yeah. Are you kidding me? I live for this stuff.
Well, have fun with it. Enjoy.
Thanks.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Katie, Katie, thank you, Katie. Have a good night.
So now I'd like to welcome David DeRusi and Chris Malone from Nezdeq.
Couldn't do it, sorry.
They worked today with their district leadership team on taking things off.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, my name's Dave DeRusi. I am the current executive director of Nezdeq, New England School Development. I am the current executive director of Nezdeq, New England School Development Council. Nezdeq's been in business for, I think we're approaching our eighty-seventh year. We have affiliate districts like yours that range from Connecticut to Maine. So we truly are New England. We do work in every state. We do facilities work. We do strategic planning work, superintendent searches. We basically are trying our best to be the conduit for districts. You need a project, give us a call. If we can help you, we're there. If not, we're building a bank of partners that can come out and work with you. So that's how I got here. Marion reached out, but I retired superintendent, thirty-three years education in Massachusetts, one year Raymond, New Hampshire. I came up over the border and did a year in Raymond. Everything from special ed teacher, vice principal, middle school, high school principal, assistant super PPS, pupil services, Malden superintendent, Sogas superintendent, retired, went to New Hampshire for a year, retired for three months and ended up as an associate director at Nezdeq. And this is my third year as the current executive director. My colleague.
Hello, everyone, I'm Chris Malone. I'm a retired superintendent from Massachusetts as well. Spent my entire career in Massachusetts, have been working with Nezdeq for about three years, predominantly conducting facility studies for Nezdeq. We certainly had the pleasure today of working with the leadership team and specifically trying to look at elements around the upcoming transition of grade seven and eight moving to the high school and kind of fleshing out some initial ideas and thoughts around this, particularly with the leadership team. Certainly would love to report back to, you have a pretty solid leadership team.
Hundred percent.
You have some people with some great ideas, people who are very focused, people who are not afraid to share their opinion with two outsiders in any way. Which is, that's great, because sometimes that takes us two or three meetings just to surface that. So when we can start with that, that's tremendous. So we've had a great day in the district. I was able to tour all three buildings, look at them and so forth. So we've had a great initial start with the district.
And we were talking with the district prior, meeting the central office team of Marion and Rob, waiting for your vote on what if you're going that seven twelve. And we were in dialogue prior to that. And I will say, that's a courageous move of the board to finally, I guess, listening to, talking with Marion. I came up over the summer just to see the high school facility, meet the two of them in person. We've done Zoom meetings, but the vote of the board to make that decision of something that I I'm hearing has been bounced back and forth for years. So the concept, you deserve your props that were on the board because the a superintendent and school boards, we share similar lives. You're in the public, you're representing, you're elected officials, we get hired by boards. So you really, it comes down to the vote. And you had a courageous move. And the idea was, I give you credit for that. I've worked in districts where, you know, a school board, it comes down to a tough decision. They have to make that vote. And I do believe you're handing that vote off to two people that are invested in the success of that vote. Your leadership team invested in the success of that vote. So we were up here today to meet the team, go through some exercises with them, really give them the opportunity to hash out with us some of their concerns. Some of, you know, we we tackle things, you know, yeah, there's barriers to everything in life, but what are the opportunities? There's risks involved, but what are the benefits? And that started the work today with that leadership team. One, two, I think we started at one, they stayed late, they worked. It was almost a quarter of four before we even debriefed. So I'm here to say, our role right now to the board, to the district, to the leadership team is to facilitate the work. So we came up with a timeline.
Have it, do you want me to pass it?
Yeah, sure. Now, the timeline, again, we gave, this is the first time the leadership team saw the timeline. We gave them opportunity to say, what worries you about the timeline? What do you like about the timeline? And I think the biggest moment today for everybody in the room, this is no longer something SAU thirty-six is talking about. It's now something that needs to get done. And that's where Chris and I committed. We have a timeline drafted out. We did it in phases on purpose because this is, you can't do this all in five meetings. We wish it was that easy. Chris has dealt with projects when he was a superintendent. I've dealt with building projects when I was a superintendent. And these projects don't just, you wish somebody could just wave a magic wand. You wake up, it's next year, seven twelve scheduled, everything's big, and life goes on. I guess you pay consultants to let you know, that's probably not going to happen. So our job is to help facilitate that work. We want you to be able to open up next year and have a successful opening because the future builds off it. And I think that's what we were talking about in this room with your leadership team today. Why are you doing this? And they really got into that. There are so many opportunities in this project for students, staff, for the community long term. And that's what we'll keep going back to, the why are you doing the work? And we had a great meeting. Timeline's broken in two phases, three phases, actually. We recognize phase one is all about kind of the technical issues. And we left it, we talked with them about this. You need schedules, you need bell schedules, you need to make sure. And that's why Chris has already been in the district doing facilities studies and facilities work. I'll let him talk a little bit about what he's already done. But you you do need those technical blocks and you need them before budget season kicks off. So that's really phase one, is to figure out, will the, it's not even will, how does the move fit? Who's coming over? Our staff's moving this way. We also left on that timeline and in today's discussion, you need to talk about the pre-K six in both of those buildings. Because you're 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 changing the footprint of the district, but in reality, nobody should be left behind. Everybody should be part of this discussion right now. So that's phase one, is to get that, the nuts and bolts, the technical issues. Phase two, all right, we know it'll all fit. We kind of have a ballpark, nothing set in cement, but we know where the staff is going. We know administrative structures, we know lunch schedules, we know. Now comes the work. So what does it begin to look like? You now have a seventh and eighth grade moved up to the high school. How do you make that transition happen smoothly? What things can we be doing now to help facilitate that move? Ideas were popping in here, talking about, you know, using booster club parents to begin to some of that work. Do that, start to look at mentoring programs now. How do you get, where do you find moments to bring seven, eight, nine through twelve together now? Could be around sporting events. You give tickets, free tickets to any seventh grader that wants to eighth grade. Those are the next, that's phase two. And then ultimately, phase three, what what's it all going to look like? How does CTE get involved in this seven, eight? I learned a lot about CTE my one year in Raymond, New Hampshire. It's a model, and Chris and I were just talking about this. It it's a great model. I liked it in when I was super intro in Raymond. Our high school kids went up to, I believe it was not in Dover, but close, there's a big CTE program there. And I'm like, what a way to to enhance the academics and the hands-on skills. You've you've, all the pieces are here. It started with a courageous vote and now you, everybody has to roll up their sleeves and we get to work as a group to get it done. I'll really let Chris talk a little bit about the facilities work.
He's already done. In the principals are great today. I was able to get through each building. I conducted a virtual meeting with the principals each to go through their building. And then today I was able to actually walk through. And my my primary focus was kind of to say, okay, will it fit? Will it work? Will will seven and eight truly fit at the high school level? And if it does, start to stimulate the K six building. What are you going to do with that space that's available? And some of those things. So we have ways of contracting numbers and doing some things to show that in a global sense, it will fit. How it truly fits, where it fits in the building, how those, that becomes the longer-term work. And that's what we really probed with the leadership team today. Start thinking about what that's going to look like. The other piece we wanted to do today with the leadership team was to really come in as outsiders and really have an open discussion about this shift. And what we're really trying to do is model with them about how they're going to begin, the entire leadership team to engage the community, the staff, the students, in discussions around what's this going to feel like? What's this going to look like? What can I expect? What types of things do we want to do right now throughout this school year to prepare students, staff, families for this transition? That's a big piece. Dave and I have done this as superintendents, we've done this as consultants, so we have some ideas. We don't know what's the exact right fit for your district. That's more of the leadership team's decision. We wouldn't want to come in and say, you should do this. No, but we've tried this, we've looked at these things, we've had experience with with these elements. But part of this is really to start think a little bit more globally, beyond seven and eight. How does this impact K through six? Where are the opportunities with that element? What are the opportunities with seven and eight now in the high school? And to really start, it's just a terrific presentation here prior to us about elements going on, which I believe is centered around the high school. Now you may have a larger student body with access to that. Where does that, you know, where can those connections be made? What can we achieve curriculum-wise? What type of improvements have we not even thought about that we can make in conjunction with this transition? It's a very practical transition, what you're going. It's very common within New England and everything we've seen, very common. Sometimes it's done for different reasons. Again, we're not experts on your district. However, we know that this transition piece can be difficult. Can be difficult for kids, can be difficult for community members, parents, can be really difficult for staff. So how do we try to address some of those issues and initiate addressing some of those issues now? And part of that is thinking about how the leadership team can really begin to bring people in to get their thoughts involved on this. Because this is an us move, everybody. This impacts every student in the district, every family in the district, impacts everyone. So everyone should be involved in it. And that's a piece we're really trying to move towards.
And the more voices at the table, the better for everybody. And and our goal as your consultants here are the facilitators of the work. So we have met today, they, everybody got to meet us. We and we explained to them, one of, and Chris and I both kind of operate the same way. I love small tactical teams. Like, you know, you put fifty people in a room, you're not going to get as much done as five of the right people in the room dealing with the right issues, with the right concerns. And you task them to get the job done and they get the job done. But it's going to be, that's what we're here for, working with your leadership team. But also to be, I may be the one reaching out to have a preliminary discussion via Zoom with the A.D. and say, hey, I get sports, I was a high school principal, sports drives so much. What are your concerns? How is this going to work seven, eight? Is there a way to do intermurals and start to do that? So we will be interfacing and always coming back to your leadership team. And we made it clear to everybody in the room, and I mean, we're not here to cut, to make this work for you. We're here to facilitate you coming to the project that you think best fits you and your needs in this district. We do have some experience at this. Personally, I, when I was in my last tenure at Sogas, we had a debt exclusion pass. It was a lot of work. They hired me, we went in, it wasn't a done deal, it voted, it passed two hundred and twenty-seven million dollars, build a new six, twelve, close four elementaries, rehab another elementary to make it a pre-K two, then rehab the middle school to make it a three, five. You had four years to do it. So there was a lot of, but one of the bigger messaging is being out in the community. There are fears and concerns in the community. When parents are, you're going, wait a minute, you're going to put six and twelve together in one complex? Yeah, there are common areas in the middle, everybody, it it's a lot. And I think the faster your leadership team can get in front of that and gather the voices. And we talked a little bit about who, focus groups, who to bring in. And honestly, the school board came up as potential, somebody that we could commit into a focus group with. Because ultimately, it was your vote and you're in the community, you're at the supermarket when somebody says, oh, why are you doing this? Hopefully, within the, by phase one, everybody knows the why. Phase two is the how, and then phase three is what. Well, the what is, you now have your seventh and eighth graders embraced, involved and immersed in that seven, twelve concept, they are part of it. They still have their little niche, they're still there, but they're part of that. And your pre-K sixes, they, boom, they have their niche, they know what they are doing. And all of a sudden, everybody's on the same page. Someone once said to me, and it stuck with me forever, you're in a meeting, it's okay to make sure everybody's on the same page, but is everybody reading from the same book? And one more question for you, Dave, can everybody read? And that stuck to me like glue because that was, I laughed, I said, yeah, I think we're in the same book, but now I'm hoping everybody can read. So I think that's where we're at as a group right now, your group. Are you on the same page? Are you in the same book? And is everybody able to read what's going on? And our job would be to help facilitate that. As I said today, we're with you until this is over. So anytime you call, we respond. You need us up here, I'm here in person, I, whenever you need me. It's it's worth, this is a tremendous opportunity. That's how we see it. We've been talking about this, Chris was on the original plan when we put the proposal together. This is a super opportunity to really restructure, reshape what you, how you do business up here, how you educate kids. While you you're not facing anything different. Chris has been up in Vermont looking at the studies on space. Connecticut's struggling, Western Mass is struggling. We just put a proposal out to do the, they're looking at declining enrollment. How do we save programs? How do we do this? Chris did a phenomenal program study through facilities work up in Maine. You're you're not alone right now. So from Connecticut to to wherever in Maine, Falmouth, I was just in Falmouth, Maine. We did a super search, they brought us back. We're meeting with their building leadership team on the ten. They Zoom because they're they're struggling. They're, they don't have enough to get funding for a brand new bill, but they're like, we need to do something with these with this, these facilities. So you're you're in a good spot. You made the vote. Congratulations, thanks, guys. And you, anytime, go through, Marion, we don't mind talking to anybody. But I think for the the team today, the timeline, the discussion, made it real now. It's no longer in the, well, it's over here, we're talking about it stage. We're now in the, we we need to get the. We're now in the, we, we need to get the work done. We've got a good team over there. They're, they're working hard too. But so the timeline makes it real. Our job is to make sure we're buying into this time.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, we dumped a lot on you, feel free.
This is great. We appreciate you coming up, talking to us and spending the day in the district and, you know, what you're in for. We're looking forward to you helping us through this.
Yeah, you touched on some points that are really important. We've talked about as we were going through this process, community involvement is key. And so I know we've talked about focus groups, committees, and whatever we can do to launch those in phase one. And, and because we have, we have families, we have parents, we have community members who are raring to go, you know, and they want to be part of this process. So what, what can we do to, to bring them in and, and involve them as soon as we can? And I really liked the idea of inviting the sixth to eighth graders because they'll be the seventh, you know, the rising seventh grade class to the high school events. And we've got homecoming coming up. It makes, you know.
I wasn't sure if you did the homecoming. I realize how huge that was in Waven, New Hampshire. I mean, we were just barely coming out of COVID when I was, that was like priority one. That had to happen. Great opportunity.
Yeah, and it's, it's coming up. It's just, it's just a natural way to extend, you know, just a personal invitation to those.
It is going to be work with the current high school students to be accepting, be role models.
Right.
And engage those, if you engage those kids, they'll come up with ideas. About how to bring on.
You didn't say anything about the nine through twelve.
You engage them on, how are you going to make them feel welcome? How are you going to make them feel part of the community?
How would you want them to treat you?
Absolutely. And you, you're now a ninth grader, you used to be.
Yes.
The lone person. Now you're an automatic role model.
You're the big brother.
So now what are you going to do? And what are those academic opportunities that now get created for seventh and eighth grade students that they did not have the opportunity to? Physically in a different school, but conceptually, particularly getting seventh and eighth grade students thinking about, is advanced placement something I want to look at down the road? Is, you know, my math curriculum at grade seven correlated with the ninth, 10th and 11th grade curriculum? And are my 11th grade teachers talking to my seventh grade teachers to make sure my kids are prepared to pass algebra? Are we having those conversations? Because we're in the same building, we're connecting those curriculum pieces. And what opportunities are there? Because we have to get first past this first, this angst about, okay, there's a real issue out there. These are younger kids coming into this building. Physically, how are we going to manage that? Social, emotionally, how are we going to support that? How are we going to help parents kind of move through that? We all know if we have success with that over a year or two, it's no longer an issue. But we got to have success with it over the first, and we're going to put in things, certainly opportunities and aspects to engage people to make sure that works and move from a deficit approach of, oh, we've got seventh graders coming in with 12th graders. Yes, we do. And here's some of the pieces we've put in place to make sure that works. Are we 100% guaranteed it's going to work? No, we're not. But we've put these pieces in place. We've listened to your concerns. We've thought about your suggestions. We're coming up with a plan and we're going to see how it goes. And we're going to make changes and adjustment as it goes. But we're very full aware that there may be parents out there very nervous about that. And that has to be listened to. That has to be accounted for. And that has to bring them in to think about elements that will hopefully prevent any issues. And on top of that, begin to think about a positive aspect of what are we going to gain from this? Instead of what, what are the angst about it? What are we potentially going to gain from this opportunity? And how is that going to work? That's a tough shift. That's a tough shift for parents. It's a tough shift.
It's this notion, and I've said it before, that our older students are some sort of monsters to these younger kids. It's just not true. I mean, I can understand it from a seventh grader's perspective. Like if we had to come up, you know, back in the day or whatever, of course it's going to be intimidating. But this, this idea that our older students are like bad and we got to keep them apart or whatever, I just, it's just not true.
But it's.
But I get it.
Right, it's a legitimate concern in parents. And once you acknowledge the legitimacy, we hear what you're saying. And as Chris said, but we put this in place, this in place, this in place. Foolproof, no. And as we were talking with your leadership team today, you know, the idea is this will happen. And in three years from now, it may look very different than the way you open next year. Because people will get more comfortable. People will be together. People will start to, you know what? I was talking with Chris and he teaches this CTE. And he's like, Dave, bring your kids in. I had, I'd love to have the seventh grade see this. And that type of, it'll evolve. But really, the lift right now is to open next year in that model. And, and I think you've got the team. The, the desire is there. We spent today just focusing on allowing your leadership team to tell us what their concerns might be. What, and they all see opportunity. The why for them is it will definitely create a more inclusive school environment with more opportunities for all kids. If that's the why we end up with, then that's the why everybody uses when you're at the supermarket. And then the how piece is where we'll build. And then the what will be someday, a seventh grader may be able to do exploratory CTE classes in your school. There's the what, because the how started and the why. It's what's right for kids. It provides us, and I think your staff, you will be able to keep programs running because your numbers will come up by moving your seven, 12 in here. Creating that environment. It, it's a great, total honesty. Nesdaq never did anything like this before. They would have walked away from this. New leadership says, no. I think this is perfect for Nesdaq to bring consultants in to help facilitate this work. Because if everything goes well, I'm going to ask one of you for a letter of reference because I'm telling you right now, school boards are struggling with these decisions everywhere. Superintendents, it's hard to be the superintendent and run everything while trying to deal. If we do this well with you and I want the feedback when we're done, then I look at you and you'd be my role model for, hey, cool. We went in, we did this. I have consultants trained to do this work. Let us come in and assist you. This is a big lift.
I think one of the things that continues to be a worry for me is the, making sure that when we're talking about communicating with community, it goes beyond the families who are directly tied to the district. We're a very, we're very much in a spot where our communities are graying. And more and more of our taxpayers don't have kids in the district, don't have grandkids in the district. And when we make big shifts like this, I'm sure one of their primary hopes is that there's a whole bunch of savings that comes out of it. And that's not always what will happen. And we know that based on some of the work we've already done to prep for this project. So I think it's also really important to, as, as communication is being shaped around that why, to think very broadly about the audience it's kicking to.
That's not, that's not the initial focus though. That's not the initial, why are we doing it? This is save money.
No, it's not. But what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is if I say to the parent of a student, these are the opportunities that exist for your student. We've gotten to their what's in it for me. I think we have to think about the what's in it for me for the business owner that doesn't have kids in the district or the elderly person who's worried about losing their home because their tax rates go up so high. And the what's in it for me is different for them. The why stays the same. Why we're doing this stays the same, but the what's in it for me is different. And that is a piece I think we really need to be focused on in our comms strategy. Because what's in it for those folks is, is not, you know, your child or your grandchild is going to have more opportunities. It's this is how we're preparing tomorrow's workforce that's going to come take care of you. Or how we're preparing a workforce that's going to come work in your business. And giving these kids that you have nothing to do with those opportunities ultimately provides you with this security in your community, whatever that security looks like, right? It might be workforce, it might be something else. It might be you end up with really well skilled ag sector that continues to support your local family farm because now we've got a diversified ag program or whatever those things are. But the what's in it for me is going to figure into that comm strategy for a very broad audience.
That was a discussion we had with your leadership team. And that's a question they're all asking themselves right now. What's in it for me? And not in a bad way, but we're going to shift things.
How do you get people to run the company?
You're all thinking about this, how does this impact me? And I, we have, today's discussion, and I'll summarize, I took some notes. Today's discussion, I've walked away and Chris and I have been talking since that meeting. You have the invested leadership team. I, I truly believe they will rally and do what's right for kids. The messaging then starts, and I think maybe their homework before is, okay, focus groups, who do you want to meet? How do you want to do that? How do you, do you just, do you do a meeting with six, eight teachers? Because they're going to be spread out now. And you meet with them and really it's a, what are the risks? What are the benefits? What are the barriers? What are the opportunities? You take the good and the bad in there. And that's a great way just to open up the discussion with, with the community at large. And you're always, I agree, people wanted to know, well, if you're closing the element, how much savings? Let us do our homework and we'll tell you when we get there. Because right now, we don't know. And it's a bigger issue for the community. And I like the idea, the success of a school district. The community hinges on the success of a school district. I don't care whether you're a big city, small city, small town, regional. People come to these places for schools. People move to these places. All they leave because of it. All they leave. And they're like, well, this isn't working out well for me. I'm out. They sell the house and they're gone. Now you're losing bodies. But the absolute, you know, declining enrollment is, it's nationwide. So it's not something scary just to this community. There's no fault, there's no rhyme. I agree, there's, you know, the graying of America is what it is. But how do you bring in some businesses? Yeah, it would behoove you to be part of this process because you build it, they will come. You'll bring families in if they see this as wow, state of the art educational system. You get good people.
Is this heaven?
It's Spartan. Say it, say it.
I, I.
You're a Spartan.
Thank you.
My high school, we were the Spartans. So when I saw Spartan, and I am a fan of the whole three, I, I have the poster in my garage, you know? This is where we stand. And that mentality is what you need right now. This is Spartan country. We are the Spartans. And what are the Spartans known for? We hold our ground and we will get, we will fight. And that's where you're at. It's a good cause. I mean that sincerely. It's a great cause.
I just have one question.
Sure.
So when you kind of were touring the high school grounds, was there anything that, not even inside but outside or whatever? Was there anything that you were like, oh wow? Like something that unique that stood out to you that you don't see anywhere else?
The mountains were pretty huge. When I found out this is 458, this is my dream. I wanted a house in the middle of that. But go ahead. There you, there is an abundance of riches in this district that might not, from the inside, might not seem as obvious. You've got great space. You've got decent, above decent buildings. A lot of districts don't have those two things. You have unbelievable class sizes. A lot of districts don't have that. You've got pieces in place that you're able to make this move without disrupting. A lot of times you make this movie, you disrupt academic settings, you disrupt other pieces. Sure, you're going to have a major change here at the high school. But once we get through some of those pieces around the general sense of, are we really going to move the seventh and eighth to the high school? Once we get past that piece with everyone, staff, community, parents, kids. Once we get past that piece, the opportunities. And I know we talked about the community and the businesses. What the community and businesses may not see is the feeling that the leadership team explained about maybe what seventh and eighth grade education looked like five, 10 years ago and what it looks like now. And now you have the opportunity to really improve that piece and go back to community members and say, look, I'm not going to sit here and say, we weren't doing this, but look at the improvements we're able to make on this piece. Look at the exposure we're able to have with seventh and eighth grade students with high quality curriculum, CTE ability to at least experiment with that, at least survey that and do all those pieces in that environment. And also, you know, as the stakes get higher, as kids get older and they start thinking about, am I going to go into a career? What kind of diploma am I going to get? Am I going on to college? You now start to really get seventh graders thinking in that realm about the importance of getting through high school. And what do I want to do for my career? And is education really important to me? And you start to shift some of those pieces, which we've seen in schools that have embraced lower grades coming into them. Sure, there's still some tough spots there. There's some tough spots and those aren't, those don't just magically go away. But there's some pieces there and then you start looking at K six. What are those, what are those curriculum pieces that we were not able to do before? What are those supports we were not able to do? And now does seven and eight at the high school start to push high school curriculum? Because kids probably are going to get exposed to teachers who are collaborating at the seven through 12 level now on content and curriculum. Does that start pushing curriculum forward? That starts impacting 11th and 12th graders? Start thinking about AP rising, other pieces of that nature? Kids who have exposure to CTE in seven and eight start excelling in shops now in 11 and 12? And start building those pieces? Where are those elements that it really improves? And, you know, I was a middle school principal for six years. Middle school is tough. It's tough, you know? It's tough to, the kids are transitioning from that. And they're developing in life, they're developing in elements. And you can see at the end in eighth grade, they've kind of garnered that education is kind of important. Doing well in school is kind of important. Trying to get them there in grade six and seven to get to that place is hard. If you can get them there earlier, you know, and get some of those pieces going and, and start to look at data. What's going on in fourth and fifth grade that's impacting seventh and eighth grade math scores, E L A scores, whatever you want to look at? And what is the high school seeing as far as some of their trends? And how do we bridge all those teachers through curriculum mapping, other aspects like that to make sure that when we're addressing needs of a fourth grade student, our expectation is that they're going to be fully prepared for a high school math curriculum? Because we did all the right things in fourth grade because the data, we told us to do that. And to start getting conversations kind of going like that linear conversations around that. So it goes beyond that element, okay, we're going to house the seventh and eighth grade at the high school. Hmm, that's our tough spot right now. That's where we're at today. That's where we're at today. How do we get to those other pieces? Is some of the piece we hope to push with the leadership team to kind of move in that direction?
I think one of the, it'll be solidified with the parents. A lot of the parents who are very questionable about it, very wary about it, you know, really totally unsure or against it. I think that's gonna change, I would love to be little fly on the room when their kids come home one day from school, all excited about doing something that they never had the chance to do in the other school. And I'd be like, what did you do, what did you make, where did you go, how did you do? And, and they're gonna start seeing what we've been trying to say about the opportunity that can't be offered without this incorporation, if you will.
We've gotten kind of a flavor of it as our eighth graders have spent time traveling up for CTE. But I have an eighth grader this year who's traveling up for, for CTE now, and walks past the art space, she's doing, like, she's busy with Kat Tobin in Vocal Studio, but she's been my little artist since she was nine months old, and came home and said, oh, it's in the program of studies for art, did you see all the things Mr. Solomon does? Like, did I take all of these classes when I come here?
She would've never seen that, right?
And so, even just the, the brief exposure they're getting through our CTE integration right now for eighth graders is starting to, to sort of create that curiosity, and the idea that it can, can grow even further is, is pretty exciting. I mean, it, it definitely, that's my why for supporting this. But I'm listening to you talk and thinking about the conversations we've had with Angie in, at programming the last couple of years, that she's really tried to do a lot of that curriculum mapping and feeling like she's gotten us started in some really good directions, I think, as we're talking about that interconnectedness and really tying standards to competencies in fourth to fifth to sixth grade.
The move you're making quietly takes you to current elementaries, and you'd be, the bridges being built. Now, even those two schools have to somehow talk together and plan together because the sixth grade is going where?
The honor roll, yeah.
Here. So it, it, just by the design, you're doing the most difficult, is getting teachers in a room to collaborate and talk with each other. Part of the reason Sargus wanted to close those elementaries, because middle school was a nightmare. You had the Waybright School, you had this, this, you had all these schools dumping into the middle school. None of them were on the same page, none of them were reading out of the same book. And the idea was, it took the sixth grade by storm to, all of a sudden now, well, you didn't learn this in your class in this fifth grade, well, no. You didn't know, but we took that away. We got rid of, and they just transition with each other now. And it took time, and they're still banging out all, all the loose ends. But you're right, it forces the idea that even what, it, it can't be different now in either sixth grade. So then we might as well talk fifth grade too. Yep. And then that's, that's really the future work, building all that curriculum. You know, again, NSDAQ office, we don't do that work, we have partners that could come in and work with this district. You get your affiliate, you get a little break on the cost, that's, that's really your next, how do you make it exactly that? With your daughter gets to have a little bit of everything, seventh and eighth grade, then by the ninth grade, hey, I know what I want, I know what I need, let's go. They can make those decisions by ninth grade.
Cool.
So there's one thing I wanted to add, we, we sort of talked around this and implied in a lot of the things you said. I think from a board perspective, as we, you know, charge our, our superintendent and our administration with, with this task and we interface with you, it's gonna be really important for us to have some ways to measure the success of this project and this integration. So it's super critical that, that this goes well, and so, you know, we, I think on the board really would like to have, you know, the goals, what we're looking for, and then how are we gonna measure those? So in a year, a year and a half, when we're into this and the seventh and eighth grader here, how will we know that we've accomplished our goals and by what measure? So that is gonna be really important for us to see, so a charge for you collectively and us. Yeah, so, you know, like a report card, if you will.
And that's where we're pushing leadership, you don't want our goals.
Yeah, you don't want our goals.
Right, right, right.
We don't, we don't know your community.
Right.
Right.
But what we're pushing with the leadership team is to do some of those, those pieces. And they'll be smaller steps.
Sure.
Because that first piece is that whole element of, the seventh, eighth grade feel safe at the high school? Are they comfortable at the high school? Is there enough space for them, are they operating effectively? That's step one. Now we look, and, and our hope is that when we leave this, the leadership team is in a tailspin thinking about all the other opportunities they haven't even thought about yet. And that just becomes a continuous conversation.
As you said, things will change over time, so what, what we end up with next year is the start.
And I think that's really, in fairness, like, I was gonna ask, I don't know what the board's goals would be for a successful. And that may be, I bet, I bet every member right now may have a different vision of what the, the goal in the opening, now, so, and we did talk, and it was the leadership team that said, perhaps you need to do kind of a focus group with the board. We left it with Marion to work out the details. You can either have both of us come back, we're a handful with a smaller crowd, or you get one of us. But we'd love to come back in a workshop training with the board and allow you to flush out. Like, one of the first questions we asked everybody in the room was, where are you at in this transition?
Well, we, one of the problems we have, we can't meet with seven board members outside of a public meeting.
I told her to look into, if, I don't know.
There are ways.
It's like training, yeah, you did, so she's seeking, because I know in each state we work in, it doesn't always have to be executive, trainings are trainings, and you, you bill it as a training. Everybody knows it's a training, and you go in and do a training.
And, and the, the human is your representative, your constituents, so we would get so much more. We had everyone you've talked to, from you. We had every element, every thought you thought, all those pieces, because we're school people. We get school people. You know, what we don't know is a particular community, what you're thinking, what are the barriers, what's the history? What are those other pieces? Wrong or right, it doesn't matter, it has to be considered. It has to be surfaced, it has to be talked about. You don't want some of these issues coming out the day before you open up at the seventh, eighth grade, coming in here. There's no bad issue, there's no, surface them all, so that, and, and that allows the district to tweak their, we didn't think of that. Oh, what can we do to put in place that would address that? Because a lot of times that's pretty simple to do, if you knew it was an issue.
Right. And I, I, you've heard it a couple of times, I think the overarching, from a parent perspective, is safety. Will my child be safe in that school?
Yep. That's, that's the big thing I hear.
Sure.
That's their baby.
Sure.
And sometimes that's the oldest child in the family.
Right.
And it, it is a youngster, and the parent doesn't even have experience with high school kids, you know, the high school arena, so, yeah, it's safety.
So one of the things our, the leadership team will be thinking about is, what can we put in place? To not eradicate that.
Yeah.
But to show we thought about it and we have systems in place
Yes.
to support the safety of your child. Will it be foolproof? Nothing ever is, however, even if it fell off the rail, we put it back on real fast.
Awesome, thank you.
Unless, yeah, this, we're moving along time here, we truly appreciate you coming for us.
We've had a great day up here, I, terrific coming up here, it's terrific.
Be careful, I drove up here fourteen years ago and I never went back.
My wife allowed me to get as far as Salisbury, Mass., which is right on the border with Seabrook. That's as far as I could get to New Hampshire.
Yeah, bring her next time.
She might stay up here a lot, but yeah, it, it's beautiful, he's, he's ready to move, he'll be up here.
The, the, the team you have in place.
Is a good team.
Great.
I live here from New York.
That we know.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Can't tell by the accent.
It's awesome.
You're driving it, duh.
Thank you.
We're staying, we're good, thank you very much.
Drive safe going back.
We're staying.
Watch the moves.
Okay, good. Oh, good. Number three is.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Continue, Nora.
To, to finish up my report, I have some new hires, and this will be the last that I do hires because this is August, and then this is, these are August hires. We have three teachers that need your approval and board action for one year certification. That's Katie Kennison, and she's grade three at Whitefield. Alyssa Fryman, who is kindergarten at Lancaster. And Micah Krull, who is grade one at Whitefield. And then we have some new parent educators, Abigail Corrad, Whitefield. Tracy Ward, Whitefield. Christine Johns, Whitefield. Jennifer Wright, Lancaster, Alyssa Jang, Lancaster, and Mariah Stilens, Lancaster. And we have some coaches, Jeffrey Sampson, varsity bass fishing, Mackenzie Norman, middle school field hockey, and Tom Voss, middle school golf volunteer.
Bass fishing, that's awesome.
Yep.
Thanks, Rob, it's John.
I'll have a full report for you guys next time. I've been pretty busy with the, the NSDAQ work, working a lot with Chris Malone, getting the information he needed to, so.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa?
I don't have any updates this week. Steph has been politely, strongly pushing for the one thing that we need to kinda close out the fiscal year end and with the state and their, the state, so. Yeah, that's where we're at.
And then we shall move on to committee reports. Unless this question's for, any, Rob or Melissa?
No.
Okay, Ed Programming?
So we met yesterday, actually, and we were going over a policy, which we have now pulled from the agenda temporarily about use of generative AI with our students. We felt it was, after talking extensively, I talked extensively, I don't know. But it was a good meeting, I think, and we, it just feels like there's more, more to think about, more to talk about, both from a sort of strategic, you know, philosophical point of view, and also procedural, you know, with procedures, how will we accommodate that in our education?
Did you ever discuss this, the seventh and eighth grade coming up?
Not really last night, no, it was, I mean, it was really kind of, I mean, we, we did talk about there being differentiation in the grades and how, but only a little bit, it seems kinda focused on the high school primarily.
I think maybe we have to start focusing on bringing that in on different times so that it becomes part of the conversation.
We have from time to time in the committee talked about those pieces, and for sure, talking curriculum with Angie regularly in terms of how that flows, really across the continuum of kindergarten through twelfth grade.
And we also talked about, like, we will review, like, before the full board sees reports about, like, assessment data, like, we see that in the committee, and there, it's like, it's laid out, I mean, you see it as a continuum rather than, you know, focusing only on certain, certain cohorts, so. But yes, yeah, point taken, for sure, especially this year as we work, work through that, but I think.
I think the more you talk about it, the, the more familiar people get with it. It's not always the new topic, you know?
Yeah.
I can only imagine that Angie will be well tied into the NSDAQ work as well, her role as the director of the team, so.
But anyway, we'll, we'll work on that project and it will come to the board in a future meeting.
We have facilities.
We have a lot going on there, so Rob was gonna spit it out.
Evelyn asked me to, to help her out, and I, she wasn't feeling well. A big chunk of our facilities meeting at the end of August surrounded the proposal and the engineering for a new heating plant at Lancaster Elementary. We heard from the folks at Siemens, they do have project costs, including what we've already have into it. We're looking at eight hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. And that takes just the boiler plant and all the piping and stuff to the gas regulator on the outside of the building. Gary is now working on contacting DES, finding out how we can close that tank out, or if we have to remove the tank, and then getting the costs associated with that. We've already reached out to the propane company, they will provide all the equipment necessary for a project like this with a five-year agreement and some rate adjustments. So like I said, a lot of information there. We're also looking at, Melissa's doing a little research around lease purchase agreements and what those look like as an option to fund us so we don't deplete a capital reserve fully putting a project like this in. We looked at a water tank project for Lancaster, you know, as this thing starts to get older.
Yep.
Domestic hot water is a challenge there right now, Gary has to go in the morning, fire that thing up. Before he leaves, he shuts it down because there's a pretty good leak and it's right over the burner. So dealing with that, it was supposed to be in today, did it actually show up, Gary? It hasn't showed up yet. We talked about the gray plow truck, Gary's gonna work with Melissa and myself to put an RFP together to get some pricing for, to bring to you folks a December purchase, but going through facilities with that.
Just, is that the oldest truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been talking about that truck for a while.
Yeah. The, there was some discussion around the workshop, Gary was charged with bringing actual proposals to the group for various options to, right now, the workshop they're in, it is leaning, so there's some safety concerns.
No, it's a liability, Rob, it's a serious liability at this point.
Then we heard some updates about the different projects around the district, and then we talked about the, the athletic fields and how the new August weather, for the third year in a row, we have, we have burned fields. And before we invest any money to build additional fields, we gotta take care of the fields that we have, and Gary's been charged with exploring, there's a well down there, seeing what it would take to get that up and going and whether it has the capacity to provide water so we can keep our fields manageable. Ben, James, anything else? It seemed to cover it.
Thank you, Rob.
Great report, Rob.
Thank you. Personnel, we have nothing to report. Policy, they were included in your package. Want anything to add, Tara?
No.
Okay. District Wellness?
We've got our wellness coordinators meeting coming up on the seventeenth. It's a quarterly meeting, so we'll have more to come at the next meeting.
Zoom, Kristen?
Zoom, yeah, we usually have the ability to connect via, or Google Meet, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want that?
Please.
Okay, I didn't think I had that, I don't think I put you on.
That's the seventeenth.
Did I, did you? Seventeenth, Wednesday, seventeenth, yeah. James, I don't think I, I gotta make sure I put you on that. It's, I can tell you right off the bat what time too, James.
Thank you.
It's from twelve thirty to two. The in-person site is the central office, but we'll, if we could do a Google Meet, that would be great.
Please, thank you. Okay, and, oh, business, real business. Actually, I meant to ask the superintendent's report, how's the bell-to-bell electronics band growing?
Oh, yeah.
Now that we have.
We're good.
Good.
Everybody hasn't been.
Okay.
Good.
Good to hear.
Good.
Thank you. Any new business?
I have a new business. I have a new business, like to bring up again, and I don't know how you wanna handle this from here out, but like to talk about renegotiation of the apportionment formulas, formula for the towns in the district as we get approaching budget season. It's time that, once again, we start looking at cost per pupil rates, and there are towns that pay significantly more cost per pupil than other towns in the district. And I think that it's a, a fair discussion to have as opposed to the alternative, which the legislature has changed the rules of withdrawal, I think we all knew that. So I don't know what, how the board would like to handle that, if they wanna meet with towns, if we wanna just have a committee amongst ourselves to talk about it.
I have to go back, I'm sorry, I have to go back and look to remember the process, I think it begins with the board discussion.
Yeah, I was just thinking that we should just.
I have to just look at the. I have to just look at the process.
Yeah.
It may have to be, I'm not sure, it's either that or it has to come from the town.
Not talking withdrawal.
One town. No, I know, you're not talking, you're talking about the reapportionment.
Reapportionment. And I believe that happens at the board level.
I don't know, Chris, so, uh, yeah, we'll look at it. I'll definitely have it for the next meeting.
It would be helpful to have the latest guidance, they, Marion, in terms of right steps because with, with new legislation, we want to make sure we're following process correctly. It, it's sort of, um, it, not sort of. It got hung up at the last apportionment conversations because we came to this realization that until the state makes some changes in funding, there's little we could do that will really have a substantial impact, um, within the district. That would be a positive impact for the district as a whole. Um, and that's why, that's where we landed when we retired the ad hoc committee last time. But if, um, if there are legislative changes in play, we want to make sure we're following the rules for how to re-enter those conversations, I think. That's my.
I remember, the board has to have the conversation of whether to approve a reapportionment or not approve it and then it has to go to the voters, if I remember right. But we'll definitely look. Okay. Any other new business?
So as I sent you an email about the, um, I think at the Grupponi Center for the school board meeting, just want to let you know I'm going to go. I'm not asking for anybody's whatever. I'm just going to go so I can experience it. And, uh, so that's, I just want to let you know I'm going.
It's September eighteenth, is that?
October.
October eighteenth, I believe.
Yes, I think it's October eighteenth.
Yeah, it's, it's the, um, NHSBA, annual meeting.
I don't, I'm new with this, so I don't know how you do that. I mean, I didn't declare myself as anything, just a school board member.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. But they, they did send me an email and they wanted a resolution or something and I, I got it today. So I just didn't even respond.
Yeah, you don't have to give them a resolution.
Okay.
But then you can just, um, send us your mileage and get reimbursed for that.
Okay.
Any other new business? No, we will move on to the action agenda. Action agenda item number one, to approve the DOE issued one-time certificate of eligibility, one-year certificate of eligibility for employees. Katie Kennison, Whitefield Elementary School, grade three teacher. Alyssa Fryman, Lancaster Elementary School, kindergarten teacher. Micah Crowell, Whitefield Elementary School, grade one teacher.
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Evelyn, second by Ben. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number two, to approve waiving policy DJE bidding procedures and approve contracts for specialized services for school year twenty-five, twenty-six with the following vendors. The Bridges Foundation in the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Linda Mood Bell in the amount of not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. North Country Education Services in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Some moved. I'll second it.
Moved by Tara, second by Chris. Questions?
I presume there's, we're, we're waiving our policy because there's no more than one, one group that can do these things.
There is very limited and I will tell you that I have many discussions with Mike and he takes this very seriously when he picks vendors, so.
Okay.
And he has.
It's specialized instruction.
Very specialized. He's comfortable there. He's seen room for aggressive in some of these vendors and then a few are, he has plans to potentially even transition us away from them, so.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item three, to approve the following school board policy for first read. JLCK, physical and emotional wellbeing of students.
Some moved.
Moved by Evelyn, second. Second by Herb. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item, item number four, to approve the following school board policies for amendment. IMBA, remote learning. IMBD, high school credit for seventh, eighth grade coursework. IMDA, patriotic exercises. JG, assignment of student. JJB, athletic policy handbook. JLIA, supervision of students. Any motion? Moved by Chris, second by Tara. Any questions? I just had one. Do we have a state flag outside? I never noticed.
Yes.
Yeah.
I know, I've seen the American flag.
It's under the American.
I just didn't realize. Okay, thank you. Now that's state law. Well, any other questions? All in favor? All, any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item five, to rescind the following school board policy. Policies, JBA incorporated into the newly amended AC, equal opportunity employment. IJNDB replaced by JICL. School district internet access for students and acceptable use agreement, twenty twenty-four.
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Evelyn, second by Ben. Any questions? None, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And that concludes the action agenda. We do have a non-public. It shouldn't be too long, but there will be no formal, um, action taken after the, other than to seal the minutes. So I need a motion to go into non-public session, according with RS A ninety-one dash A, colon three, section two, paragraph I.
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Tara, second by Herb. Roll call please, Steph.
Jay Ackerman.
Hi.
E. Flynn.
Here.
T. Giles.
Yes.
E. Jellison.
Yep.
R. Louis Connaught.
Yes.
H. Brandon.
Yes.
Kagan Burke.
Steph? Thank you, Carol, for coming. And.